All right, I'm going to call the board for the August 21st meeting of the Forest Hills Board of Education. This is a meeting of the Board of Education held in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a community public hearing. There is a time for public comment during the meeting as indicated in Agenda Item 8. Per our established procedures, if you would like a chance to speak during public comment, please fill out a card that is located at the table right near the front door where you came in and put it in the appropriate basket. Cards will be collected immediately prior to board communications. With that, would you please stand and join us as Jeremy Popes leads us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
My Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Hello and welcome to the Forest Hills Finance Center for our August Board Meeting, which also coincides with the first day of school. Hopefully everyone survived the plane, bus drop-off, or pickup, and you can get home on time. We don't have students here on this building on a regular basis, but soon they will be here having concerts in no time. This year we do have several family-friendly touring shows coming through, so don't miss our Holiday Circus Music Show, or Zephyr Circus Mechanics, or the Honeys Spamilton Musical. Whatever you choose will be fun time as always. Now I'd like to head back to the board. Have a great night.
Thank you very much, Jeremy. All right, first up we have our instructional highlight with Assistant Center Superintendent for Instruction, Mr. Scott Hay.
Okay, hear me okay? Good. I just wanted to take a little bit of time and go through some data that we had from our climate and culture surveys. In addition to that, I also want to share some achievement data that we have, but more importantly, where are we trending? One of the things that I want to leave this board with is a little bit of encouragement. And to kind of encourage the heart a little bit, these have been some pretty tumultuous and tough times, and oftentimes you have people that come to you, and they come to you with various needs. Oftentimes those needs, they can be critical, they can be uplifting, but they all are coming from a place of care and concern for students. That's why we're in the business. We all care about kids. So what I want to share with you is what do the results say? What are people saying? Now, clearly, we don't have every single person represented in the data, but what we do have are family responses of over 2,200 families. We have 557 staff, and we've got a lot of students. So I'm really excited to go through some of this with you. In terms of rigor, where are we? Well, in 2022, '23, we took more AP exams and scored higher than at any point in time in our history. I think that's something to be proud of. Our teachers are knocking it out of the park. It is a difficult time right now, and they are working their tails off. Our administrators are providing the right type of environment, and we're really proud of our students. So if you look at that data, you can see where our students are scoring. If you look at just simply AP course enrollment, and you can take a look at the data that is up there, you'll notice that we have more students now than growing, and we're a declining district right now. We have fewer students, but more students taking AP classes. So when somebody says to you that rigor is just not there, maybe for that sample size of one, but I would suggest that the data indicates that more and more students are taking those AP courses. So as a board, I think you should be very proud of that. How about our elementary students? Where are they scoring? These scores are percent-- these are percentiles, not percentages. These are percentiles. Again, where they start in the fall and where they end in the spring. These are reading scores. And when you look at this, our students are doing really well. We've been through some tough times. We've had students that have been impacted by a number of things. But when you look at the data, these are not-- this is not a test that's specific to Forest Hills. This is the NWA's MAP test, which is given all over the country. The data is once again impressive. I think it shows the care and concern that our teachers have for our students and for our families. They value what happens here. This is math percentiles. It's the same story. We'd like to get those up there with the reading order, but we're working on that. We certainly are not where we want to be because we never rest. When you look at those percentiles, we would love it to be 99 or 100 if it were possible. So that's the goal. It's every child. Taking a look at what have people been saying? What are those perceptions and what is the trends? So when we look at the first-- and it's hard for me to see, sorry-- when we look at students reporting that the lessons and assignments are challenging, we look at where we were last year, and I'm really proud of our building leadership teams. Those leadership teams are comprised of administrators and teachers getting together to say, "What can we do to improve the experience of our students?" Teacher-- you'll notice that there's been an increase from '21, '22 to '22, '23, both from our students and our families, and at all levels. The next one are teachers setting high expectations for children's learning, student learning. Again, taking a look at-- I have the bar right here, aside by side. You can see that as we focus on these things, we tend to do better and improve. This one shows that sense of belonging. This was something that was really important to us, and we focused on last year. Looking at the high school, last year, '21, '22, at 69.4%. So this year, or this last survey, was 72.7. That tells us we still have some work to do because while we're excited that that number is increasing from students' reporting, we're not done because no child should feel as if they don't have a sense of belonging in school. And then the family results and then the staff results are there as well. But we really focus in on that student. What are the students saying that's happening in their schools? We want them to feel a sense of belonging. The next one is being informed. How do families feel they're being informed about their child's learning? Families reporting out and staff reporting out. Again, taking a look at that trend analysis, which way are we going? This one, I'm satisfied with the accessibility of school staff should I wish to discuss my individual child's needs. So again, at the elementary, we're really high, and then the middle schools and the high school were climbing. So those are things that we're encouraged over. And this is a result of our staff doing intentional things to engage with our parents and with our community. Finally, taking a look at that SAT performance. We have to look at just '21, '22, '22, '23 is still under embargo, but the comparison game seems to be really important. How do we measure up to other schools in the area? And when you look, we're still chasing one school. It looks like we're chasing East Grand Rapids, but when you look at the scores, but this is the ELA portion, we're still trending far above. And since we're chasing East Grand Rapids, we just thought we'd bring Dr. Shu to land, and we figured by the end of this year, we'll catch up. Here are the math scores. Again, our students are doing phenomenal. And then when you combine those and you look at that composite score, we're right up there again. So I'm really proud of our students, our staff, and what we're accomplishing here in the district. It doesn't mean that we're done. It doesn't mean that we should pat ourselves on the back and say, "Yep, we've got it all figured out." We don't. But we're working really, really hard to figure it out for each and every student. And I think that that, along with this data, I think the board, you should be commended for what you're doing and what you're pushing the organization to do. So it's a big thank you from the teachers, from the administration, and for our students. So thank you for the job that you've done. I think it's reflected in the data. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Scott. And the board actually does very little in regard to that. It's all of the staff and all the teachers and bus drivers and custodians and everybody from the ground up that does all of that work and is making such a great place for our kids. So thank you for the board. Does anybody have any questions for Assistant Superintendent Hay? All right, we are up to our consent grouping then. Could I please have a motion to consider the consent grouping?
And will we consider the consent grouping? Items 5A13.
A second? A second. And before I ask if anybody has something they would like to pull up a special consideration, I'm going to take that liberty myself. I am going to pull out Item VA2, or 5A2-- first day of working out, too-- 5A2 Board Policies. I would like to just pull that out, and we can just postpone that discussion just because we received a bunch of policies in from TruN. They write all of our board policies for us, and they give us recommendations of best practices and what needs to be taken into account, spending changes, things like that. But they came in on Friday. Not everybody has had a chance perhaps to answer all the questions that they have. And then some people have asked questions, and we haven't had time to get answers. So I would like to propose that we just take that one off the table for right now, and we can revisit that later. And is there anything else, anybody else would like to pull out? Okay, anything you would like to direct your attention to?
No. I appreciate the questions that have come in regarding the board policies. We work with MTE, who's the Department of Education, and also look at all the legislation that's been passed and policy that has to be implemented. And as Kristen said, we work with our law firm, TruN, and they give us some wordage and vocabulary that we need to use and keep within our policies. Unfortunately, we haven't had enough time to have that back and forth with all the board members, so I appreciate that women have to take it off the top.
All right, then I decide we'll turn it over to Dr. Shoud for comments.
Certainly. A bit of a docket to get through from finance this month. We had a busy month as school gets underway. And I would start before the items for approval today with a little bit of an update on some of the ongoing topics, some of the topics coming towards our district this fall. And then things that we'll be repeating, I think, a lot for our community to hear and understand and for us to understand as well. So these were items that we discussed at our meeting. The first was a construction update for our bond. I think we'll continue to see more formal presentations on the work that's been done in our community and in our schools as a result of our 2017 bond. But the work that's going on now, Ane Vista has entered Phase 3 of their renovations. Kind Ridge is underway in Phase 1. The administration and the Transition Center building next to us is scheduled to be completed in March. And Asa Central Middle School is to be completed by spring break. So a lot of good work happening there. There was also any number of roofing and building maintenance activities that happened over the summer that were all completed as scheduled. So good things there and more to come. The next one on our list is an update about November for the election this year. We have a couple of important issues relating to Forest Hills on the ballot in November of this year, 2023. The first is a new bond proposal for our next way of funding for our capital projects and for our maintenance that we do. Again, that's something that we'll continue to hear about through the fall, and the district will continue to advertise as well. But the gist of it, or the main takeaway is the ask is for $340 million to fund our projects and our capital improvements across the district. And that comes, thanks to the hard work of our teams, at no increase in the current tax rate. So if you look at your property taxes right now, what we pay in for our capital projects here, for our current bond, there is no increase in that ask compared to what we're paying now. Okay, more details to come, but the three sort of buckets that this bond is being proposed in are modernizing learning spaces, which we've been doing a lot of the last handful of years already and continue to do in our schools. The second is to improve athletics, find arts, and community facilities, which is a broad category as well, and maybe hallmark by our aquatic center right over here that is aging. And the potential is even for a brand-new aquatic center for our district that would be bigger, accommodate all of our activities that participate there, as well as allow us to be a place where competitions are held and state and regional tournaments can come to Forest Hills. So that is part of that second bucket. And the third is the ongoing effort to update our infrastructure, both from safety and security perspectives, replacing old buses and the mechanical roofing, the paving projects that are always happening as things become aged in our district. So that's the first one to have and to advocate for as we, as board members and community members can do, is this bond proposal that will be there in November. The second piece that will be on the ballot is a little more nuanced. It's something that we have spent hours and hours and hours talking about. In Finance Committee, it's a very sort of detailed topic, but it relates to the operating millage that is already in effect for our community for non-homestead properties. So separate from this bond proposal entirely is this non-homestead tax that gets levied to on partial properties, second properties in our district that the state includes as part of our annual funding. So when the state decides how its money for stills is due based on that per pupil amount that we'll talk more about, they assume some of that is collected locally through this operating millage. And they assume that we are levying the maximum allowable for that millage, and that will be 18 mils, $15 for every $1,000 of property value on these non-homesteads. Certain economic factors at play. There's an amendment in the Michigan Constitution that essentially causes to not be able to levy that full amount when certain economic circumstances are at play, which is what we are in now. We're growing, our property values have exceeded the rate of inflation. So we are not able to levy that full 18 mils. We've had to roll back what we can ask out of that. The state, however, still continues to assume we're levying the full amount. So essentially what that nets to is us losing money that the state thinks that we are getting. And it doesn't, it's not made up anywhere else. So this year, for example, right now, we're levying 17.6614 mils as a result of these required rollbacks. And so the second ask on the ballot this November will be to increase this millage, this existing operating millage, by 0.5 mils, which will be enough to allow us to continue to levy the maximum 18, where we can recoup, well, it's currently right now about $400,000 short change annually for us. This will allow us to receive that full funding locally so that we're not just losing out on the money that the state believes we're supposed to be getting and believes that we are taxing locally. So again, more to come on both of these things throughout the fall. You'll probably hear us talk about them more at this meeting as reminders as well. But the bond proposal, the operating millage will both be things that we, as a board of education, will ask to vote yes on, of course, to fund the great things we're doing there. The next item is a budget update and kind of in kind of 30,000-foot view on our budget. Overall, our budget at Forest Hills is very strong, very healthy. We have a few items that are realities that we will have to contend with as many districts will have to contend with in the coming years. And in a state of transparency, we want to make more to bring those to this table so that we can have a more informed community, more informed body advocating for our schools. So on a very high level, it's been a record year for public schools funding. As many of us have probably heard, there's more money in the proposed or in the accepted budget now from the state for public schools than there really has ever been before, and that's great news. Our per pupil amount that makes up our foundation allowance and constitutes the bulk of our general funding was increased by $458 per student. Brings that total up to just over $9,600 per student, which is great. There's new recurring money coming for special education programs and other Atlas groups as well. That's all good news. There's also a lot of new one-time funding that we're not getting annually, but we'll get this year in any number of categories related to education compensation, early literacy instruction, retirement reimbursement, and others. And then, of course, there's whole, entire new buckets of money that has been allocated for public schools that we are all familiar with as well, like the free breakfast and lunch programs that are being invested in across the state. And the creation of a school aid rainy day fund, essentially, which is still a little ambiguous, but I think is in place to help shelter us for if, although harder economic times come, where the school aid fund doesn't have to get money back or we don't have to take reductions in our per pupil amount. So all of that is good news. All of that is good news for public education, and it's good news for us. To segue into our general fund, however, then, which houses the majority of our dollars and really is where the foundation allowance from the state gets dropped into our bucket. The theme that we've had in the last three, four years is very similar to most public schools in that our expenditures have been exceeding our revenues. This is pandemic-related. This is related to a number of economic factors. But it kind of puts a damper into this wave of new money that's coming out of the state. And for really three main reasons, at least that I see. One, we are getting more money per pupil, but we, like most public districts in the state, have fewer pupils. Year after year, for seven or eight years, I think now in a row, we have had a reduction in the number of students that we have. So it seems like we're getting a lot of new money per pupil, but that's hampered a little bit by having fewer students in Forest Hills. Number two is inflation, which is affecting us all in every way, but the things that we ordinarily pay for in our district are more expensive now. So we have to spend more money for the same things that we've revised in the previous years. And three that we can't overlook is that we have three attendance areas, and that the money that we get has to be split a lot in three ways. So if we were to compare to any district school B that has the same number of pupils, but one high school, for example, instead of three, that's three expenses we incur for every one, you know, for filling blank areas. So just not to tamper down any of the good things about this new money coming to us. But when we, I think we tend to think, "Look at all this money flowing into public schools. Forest Hills must have it coming out of their ears." And it's, there's a few things that cut into that a little bit. So a couple of realities that we have facing us in the coming year and years. One is a structural deficit. We, again, like many schools, have expenditures that outdo our revenue each year. And we have a floor that the board policy has established for what we are required to maintain in this general fund. We have a budget this year of about $130 million that we'll take in and spend, and that leaves us with about $16.5 million in this general fund, which is a great place to be, certainly, with pandemic. A lot of schools have a lot less in their funds that they have to tap into. But our board policy says we're not allowed to fall below 10% of that, so that would be roughly $13 million. And as we have needed to access that funding more to, in the last couple of years, to pay for things, we're approaching the limit where we're not going to just infinitely pull from this extra account. And if we are unable, which we are, to really increase our revenue substantially, every entity will tell you that you have to then look at expenditures to try and sort out how to balance that budget and how to sort of come in and start to balance this general fund again year over year. So it's not a red flag. We're not in bad shape by any stretch, but it is just where we are now. It's where most places are now. And it just, that's what we'll be looking ahead to in the next year or two, is trying to find ways to be lean or trying to find ways to start to land the plane, as Superintendent Hay liked to say, and stop reaching into our general fund so much and start perhaps even heading back. The second piece, I'm sorry, we're getting there, is that ESTER funds are, will be going away. One of our ESTER funds were the federal government programs to supply COVID funding to public schools. We're currently right now in ESTER 3 funding, which is the final kind of installment that was granted by the federal government. That funding lasts us until next September, and then that money will be gone. We've always known this is short-term money, that this is money with a very finite purpose, and that is to help recover learning loss that was encountered during the pandemic. And we are using those funds actively, as we have been, to that goal. I think as Superintendent Hay showed us, we're doing well and trying to recover that learning loss. But those are funds that currently make up some of our expenditures right now that pay for some of those things, and those funds are going away. Again, we've known that from the beginning, but they are, in some respects, applying mandates to our overall budgets while we have them this year. And those gaps will be more noticeable when that's gone through. We're planning ahead for that and looking for ways to move on after ESTER money, which we know will be next fall. So all of that to say, it's, again, it's not a bad place that we are in. It's a good place we are in, and all the credit to Superintendent Hay and to Mr. Davis and all of our leadership for having us in such a stable financial place before the pandemic, such that we are in a very good place now on the other side of the pandemic relative to a lot of public schools. But it's conversations that will need to be had, and it's just things that are going to be kind of ever-present as we look at where we spend our money in the year and years ahead. So a brief update there. Two final small updates. One, a solar update hurts my heart. I'm a big solar fan. We had investigated, we had talked to people about doing solar on our roofs and making it a very cool program for our kids to be able to use and a way to generate actually money in the long term for the district. And with interest rates rising and costs what they are, those plans have become less favorable for our district to continue to explore. So those plans are not, they're not dead, but they're just not old, and we're not really actively pursuing those, those solar anymore. Costs are just too high. It doesn't make financial sense to pursue at this time. Final update that we had in discussion was the placement of a cell tower over in the forest's eastern area. If you, if that's where you live or drive through or have kids, it is very bad in that location of the district. Basic cell functions are difficult to accomplish, and that obviously poses safety and security risks for our students and staff in those areas. So we, as a district, have taken it upon ourselves to start the conversation about how we could improve that, how we could fund that. So those, so all of this, just to say that those discussions are ongoing. Likely still a multi-year process probably ahead of us before that becomes a reality and we get better bars at that forest than at the high school. But all to say that that's happening in the background as well. More information to come. Any questions before the action items? I guess I would take if anybody has any on all of those updates. Very good. What's that? Yeah, yeah, oh, sure. Yeah, yeah, I'll start again at the top. So leads us to tonight. Action items for approval. Number one is purchase of a prescription renewal for campus, both the cloud and the studio cloud programs from upcoming infrastructure. This is the cloud-based software that we use throughout our district at essentially every level of teaching and learning and communication and assessment. We implemented this in 2020, and this is up for renewal of three-year subscription that will take us through July of 2026 for a cost not to exceed $225,947, which is actually quite a bit less than the first three years that we are ending now. So this is money that will come out of our general fund. The second item is a social studies curriculum item. It's a one-year renewal for TCI, Teachers Curriculum Institute Social Studies, for the student-teacher digital licenses for our K-5 curriculum. This is for a cost not to exceed $38,700 for this one-year renewal out of our general fund as well. The next item is for updated video surveillance equipment. The, our current system that we have throughout the district is a robust seven years old, and in that time, it has become wildly outdated and kind of subpar for what is expected from a safety and security perspective. So this proposal was put out to bid. Three proposals were reviewed, and the recommendation is for people-driven technology to do all kinds of things to our system. Bring in new high-definition video, advanced analytics to track and identify suspicious activity. It is a watch scalable system to expand in the future if we need. There's more storage ability. There's more remote monitoring. It's a big improvement in to the system that we have currently in place, and it will ultimately add or replace 255 indoor and outdoor cameras across the district. So a big undertaking. The low bid, again, was people-driven technology. The request is for a cost not to exceed $400,000, which will include cameras, mounts, a video management system, and the storage. And that qualifies under our 2021 capital projects. The next item is for, is an annual item to purchase diesel fuel for our buses and transportation vehicles for the school year. The way this works, as a reminder, we have five vendors that we kind of keep on hand, and when our tank is essentially emptied, and when the day comes that we need to refill it, we call all five of these people and we place an order with wherever it is cheapest at that given time. So for context, we have, we've spent, in 2020 pandemic year, we spent about $200,000 on gas. '21, '22 was $330,000. Last year was about $405,000 for annual fuel costs. And the request this year is for about the same, a cost not to exceed $425,000 out of our general fund. The next item is to purchase playground wear mats for our playgrounds across the district. The state of Michigan requires places where childcare programs have their playgrounds inspected. And one of the recommended improvements that we were given were for these play mats. Essentially, as I understand, if you think of the area, under the slides, under the swings, that gets scraped away all the time-- that gets scraped away all the time and divots created, and creates a safety risk essentially that you have to continue to backfill and get swept away. So these are those mats that would go there in place of landscaping or wood chips. So we're using omnichinching cooperation for this, for a cost not to exceed $41,200 to put those mats across our district, and that will come out of the childcare fund. Next is an approval for a resolution to the Michigan Department of, for our district to request a permit from the Department of Treasury. The ask is, or the desire is to improve the landscaping down the street here that borders or that kind of separates Fulton Avenue from Collins Elementary. You can envision driving there, there's kind of that area of no man's land, it's kind of unkept, it's kind of, you know, and the desire is to landscape that, it's our property, to make it look a little cleaner. We have essentially leftover funds from prior projects that we have already approved that were there for contingency that can be used for this, so it's not really a new expense, their dollars have been already approved. But this request for us tonight is for the resolution. That area is a right-of-way in Michigan, so the Department of Transportation requires that we adopt a resolution for our district to request a permit. So the resolution verbiage was in our packet, and this approval will authorize two individuals from our district to request that permit. That would be Julie Davis, Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Operations, and Steve King, our Director of Operations. And finally, we have, have to us to authorize property tax reimbursements of $82,988.27 to Kent County, and that is all we had time for at this month's finance meeting. Any questions or clarifications?
Thank you very much, appreciate it. All right, I believe Mrs. Cobell is going to be reporting on curriculum.
Yes, I am, thanks for the report CJ. While it was a great deal of things for the finance committee to consider this month, it actually was a really lean month for our curriculum committee. So I will keep this actually brief. But no, really, I'm going to spend a little bit of time talking about something I'm really excited about. I'm excited to report that many of our elementary schools are going to have their own therapy dogs either this year or the next. ATOA teacher Laura Schuler and Principal Allison Woodside presented this initiative to the curriculum committee. Laura shared her excellent thorough preparation for this initiative, including how those dogs meet all requirements of Board Policy 3109, Section B, and the dog's benefits, or dare I say necessity, for students and staff, and how seven businesses in the community, including five veterinary hospitals or clinics, are partnering with our district to cover nearly all of the costs for the necessary care of these animals over their lifetimes. Therapy dogs are specially trained to go to work, you know, similar to canine police dogs or other types of service dogs. And they will greet students warmly in the morning and create and increase sense of belonging. Belonging very important to us this year, especially with PBIs. Visit classrooms to support reading development. It has been shown that while some students do struggle to read in the presence of another person, reading to a dog suddenly makes that so much easier. Let's see, they will provide tier-one support for students with anxiety and/or depression, which continues to be an issue since COVID, but I mean, it's always been, it's an issue. It will support students with autism with their social skills, emotional regulation, and sensory stimulation. There's so much these therapy dogs can do to help our students. This fantastic addition to our, oh, and I also ought to mention that it's not just students who need the benefits of therapy dogs, but also staff and administrators can receive those benefits as well. So this is really going to be good for everybody in the building. This fantastic addition to our elementaries will bring us up to speed with other districts such as Rockford, Northview, and Lowell, who already have therapy dogs working in their schools. So bravo to Laura and Allison for this impressive initiative, it's very exciting. But aside from that presentation, this was, like I said, a really rather short meeting. Assistant Superintendent Scott H. shared the same district-wide data that you already heard this evening presented to us, and also explained requests made to the finance committee for the renewal of our digital licenses for TCI, social studies, and subscriptions to Canvas LMS Cloud and Canvas Studio Cloud, as you have actually already explained. But of course, that particular item is cross-finance and curriculum. Akin Van Antwerk requested committee approval of two supplemental instructional resources, Delta Math for Central High and Speakable I.O. at Central Middle and High, which will support learning French, Spanish, and Chinese. For this evening's action items, the committee recommends that we approve the use of Rob Boyaia's book Because of Mr. Terupt for sixth-grade ELA students at Central Woodlands and Marie Lou's Legend for Central Middle eighth graders in ELA. And that is it.
Thank you, does anybody have any questions for Mrs. Cobell? All right, any further discussion on anything that we've been presented? All right, can we go for a roll call, open please? Dr. Michelle?
Yes.
Ms. Seinfeld? Yes. Ms. Strah? Yes. Dr. Bass? Yes. This is trying, yes. Terrific. That's a big item there. Here are the informational items before I turn it over to Dr. Shubal. I just wanted to, this is, if anybody came in late, this is your final call to fill out a card if you want to speak at public comment. They are at the back table right near where you came in, and they will be picked up after informational items. And I'm not sure if Elizabeth is here, she is, Mark is in, okay, you got it, awesome. Thank you very much. All right, Dr. Shubal.
As far as, probably, I'm just still getting acquainted with my phones here, so I won't do that for you. The administrative assignments, hopefully we have all of our teaching assignments already filled and they're ready to go. It was amazing to go into the buildings this year, or today, to see opening day and to have an opportunity to see our teachers in action. But yes, we have our employment, and then we also have our administrative assignments for our administrators this year, and you have a long list of them. And that was what was current as of July 1. Some of the administrators on the list are all happy with us for the whole year, but the majority of them aren't here for the duration of this school year.
Thank you very much. We are then up to board communication, so Mark, if you would bring those cards up. And does anyone have any board communications today?
I did. One, short, sweet, and nice, Amy Bush is a teacher that left us this past spring, but she went out of her way to write me just a quick note, I get to work with her for Project Charlie, so I know her. And she said, as we all know, we have to honor the people that retire, and she said, I just want your board in this district to know that I don't get to go through the process just like everybody else, because my husband took a job up north, but it's been an honor and a privilege to serve this district for 24 years of my career, and wanted the board to know that and wanted the district to know that. And she said, has one year left somewhere up north, I don't know when it is, but we let her know that those kids up north are lucky to get her for her last year. So that was just an ex woman fuzzy, and I just wanted you all to know that she said that. And then the other thing, it's time for my annual public service announcement, at least for the last three years. M.A.S.B.'s, I think you sent a note out, Annual Leadership Conference is November 9th to 12th in Lansing this year. I think we're still getting our way in the land, what from a tutelage perspective is worthwhile, but the networking there and the people we met and the things we learned last year, the Kristens and Maggie were there last year, and I'm going to strongly encourage any of us, especially newbies that haven't done CPA 101, to probably try to dig deep into that, because you guys have already had it, right? Worthwhile experience to be exposed to that education with a different perspective, a little out of house, right? Okay, so anyway, there's your PSA, put it out in your calendar, hopefully you can make an appearance for the district.
And I think there's so many breakout sessions to choose from, that you don't have to commit to all three days of this, and you can choose the ones that are scheduled.
And we did that last year, we did a lot of overlap, everybody sort of touched in with something that was of interest to our board slash district, and that was right, right?
Yeah. Thank you. Any other board communications?
I just have a few brief items from the foundation. We have yet to reconvene for the school year, yet, and a couple of items coming up quickly. One is this Friday down in Downey at Legacy Park is the Scavenger Hunt, which has grown exponentially in the years since its inception, so if you've got elementary kiddos or want to go down there 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. on Friday, it's a great event that the foundation puts on, Scavenger Hunt down there in Downey. And the second item is the Fall Grant Cycle is already open for foundation grants. So teachers, staff, employees can apply the date September 13th. So more information on the website and the application is on the website as well.
We have, I mean CJ, the Fall Grant Cycle is smaller than the winter's, right?
It tends to be, yeah, and it's kind of more contained kind of in all facets too, so it's, feels like kind of a brief window, but if there's ideas out there, and that's why I want to highlight, September 13th is when that closes. So if there's some requests out there, you can apply on that.
All right. The only one that I had was, I know it's been brought up a couple of times about the possibility of live streaming. I unfortunately do not have any information on that yet. We have reached out to our law firm and M.A.S.B. to ask some technical questions that our communications department had, some legal questions as well, and we just have not heard back yet, so I just wanted to provide that data, we're studying for information before we can talk about whether it's possible or not. Do you know when they're proposing to get back to us?
I do not. They're usually pretty quick, but I think with the start of the school year, everybody's just a little bit, a little behind the times right now, so I expect to get back with us soon, and I'll follow up here.
All right, so at this time, we are going to move to public comments, and we welcome members of the committee to address the board. When you are called, please come up to the microphone and state your name and your address, and limit your comments to three minutes. Please interrupt all comments to the board. Per established procedures, we will not respond to questions or interact with the speaker during public comment. Everyone who indicates that they would like follow-up from the district will get follow-up from the appropriate administrator. If I say your name and you changed your mind about speaking, you may just pass. First up, we have Jake Kelly.
Hi. At first start, just thank you for your service in the board, I know it's a thankless job. My comment isn't meant to be an ax to grime or a frustration to bank pointlessly. I have two sons in the district, one at Collins and one at Oregon Trails. My wife works at Collins Elementary Media Center, and today was the first day of my 17th year teaching at Collins at the time. I think what I want to do is impress upon the knee for clear and concise communication, especially as it relates to support staff. I think there's been a breakdown in communication where a lot of problems can be traced back just to information that hasn't been shared in a timely manner. I don't think it's necessary to go into specifics here. I thought about leaving a, you know, a written statement, but I think I'd rather just want to make an appeal. The support staff doesn't get paid a lot of money, but they serve a vital role in our I think there's an infilling frustration that's going unnoticed. And like I said, my wife does work in the media center at Collins, so full disclosure, I know this frustration in part because of conversation that has in my life. I'd like the opportunity to kind of explain the situation just strictly, possibly, but in a manner that at least the board is fully aware of, at least how they perceive what's going on. It's not just one individual, it's a group. So I just think this is, I love our district, but this is somewhere we can, every organization has a hierarchy, but if the information isn't flowing down appropriately, then people make the wrong assumptions, and I'm pretty sure that's what's happening.
Thank you. I think this is Scott Skene.
Yes.
Dudley.
Welcome, my name is Dudley, and I've been a resident of Forest Hills for 27 years.
You know, can you just move that microphone, it's hard to hear you guys, thank you.
Is that better?
Yeah, that's nice.
Okay. So I've been a resident here in Forest Hills for 27 years, and so I have a lot of history in the district. History is important to understand how to improve. Now, we've been through many bond years, this is another bond year, but we always put our best feet forward. This is something that's truly impactful in our district. We are actually on an 11-year decline of student, not seven, okay? There's a reason that we're declining. Public schools across the state of Michigan are failing, not just here, but other schools. And it's not because we're having less babies, it's because we've given up the teaching of academics. Parents' confidence in public schools is declining, okay? We need to get back to education. Last year, they ended the school board meeting, I summarized it when two students came up and they were so proud of their education that you guys gave them, and they were seniors. And they said in the end of it, history is not important, it's how we feel about each other. That's a reflection of this board, so as President Fawcett had said, you guys don't affect the numbers, you actually do affect the numbers. It's your policy and your drive that drives the district on what's important. When you drive toward what's important is diversity, equity, inclusion, and socio-emotional learning, that's your principle. You do drive the education, that's why our numbers keep declining. You want to increase, then restore confidence in the parents and the district, okay? One way you can do that is stop following what everybody else is doing. The reason the state and schools are failing, and they're all failing in unison, because they follow the same protocol. Michigan School Board Association is something you guys proudly do, you follow in lockstep, teachers union, and that drives the district. You need to get back to the basics of education, and then restore confidence in our school district, and that's what's going to, you're going to have, you already have empty classrooms now, you're dealing with classrooms that you don't have enough people participate. Private schools don't have that, and public schools are up over, homeschooling is up over 300%. There's a reason for that. People's confidence in public school systems is failing. They fail, yet you don't cut the budget. Budget's off, all we're doing is about money. If you think money's going to solve the problem, I'll give you a staggering number. Grand Rapids Public Schools has a budget of $289 million. They have only 13,900 students left, okay? Our number's 9,100, and this, next year will be under 9,000, under 9,000. So I want you to consider that you do have the ability to control the curriculum and restore parents' confidence, thank you.
Thank you. Stephanie Moon.
I think it was, you know, great to show forward progress, and it's always great to look at the improvements we have made, and then to reflect on areas that we should be still working on and improving on, and I think that EFO well admits we're a work in progress, I think we all would agree. Speaking of money, by the way, how about buying a new microphone? We do that? Anyway, a concern I have though is that we're only moving forward in cherry-pot areas. We had some great forward-moving progress last year in an area that we were going to start cleaning up some of the smut from our libraries in the schools when it came to a screeching halt, and I'm just not sure why, because I have been racking my brains and scouring the internet trying to find any piece of data or study showing that early exposure to sexually explicit content is beneficial for children. And I challenge each of you, and I ask for feedback. we survey the district, would it be possible next time to take some excerpts from the smut in our libraries that might have brought to your attention and put it on the survey? And ask the community, "How does this make you feel as a parent?" That would be an honest response from the community, because if we want to unite, and we all talk about united, that is one area that I would tell you 99% of parents out there, they know better. Kids know better, parents know better. We need to find areas we can unite on and focus on those things, and stop bringing animals into the schools and worrying about, you know, spending money in other areas before we fix the problems that we currently have. If you would take some time, I put together this pamphlet for you. I can find all kinds of data and studies showing that early exposure to sexually explicit content is harmful to minors. So if you're proud that you're harming minors, keep at it. So I would really appreciate your feedback to the opposite. Thank you.
Cherry Tonsma?
Yes.
George Taruk? George? Chaya Akraw? I did better last time. Okay.
Hi, I'm Chaya Akraw. I've been in the district for 17 years. I have an eighth grader and a senior, and we are very proud of this district. We very much love this district. And my children have very much excelled at this district, so we have nothing but positive things to say. The reason I came here is actually, it's probably not as serious as some of this other stuff, but it is important in our family. It's the graduation courts. I know that we, it came up last year for the class of 2023 at Northern that they were going to lose their courts, and the students actually petitioned. And I think that's incredible, first of all, that the students would advocate for themselves and that they would get their courts back. But I think it also says something about the importance of the courts to the students. We've just been talking about listening to our students more and hearing what they say. And they are, for teenagers that are leaving and to have them actually make the effort. I mean, I can't get my son to move a cup from one room to another, let alone petition, and to have this group do that. I feel like it's something that we shouldn't have to revisit year by year and school by school. It should be something that we either decide as a district that all our schools will acknowledge that positive behavior and that positive interaction with our community that is the reason that you receive those courts, rather than making it very individual. And so I'd really love to see that the question of whether their even courts are not taken off the table and it become a district decision. It just doesn't feel like Central should have a different reasoning versus Northern. The students are all working hard and they're excelling, and they should be rewarded, and this is really just an acknowledgement of the hard work that they've done. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
My speech today is rated G, and reflects my opinions only. I'm very pleased to see the new media center policy affirming familial autonomy. It's definitely a step in the right direction, but let us not rest on our laurels, there's still much to be done regarding age inappropriate books in school media centers. Last year, I highlighted my concern with the book review process. Number one, it is subject to implicit bias of a selected review committee and therefore not objective or in terms of reproducible. Number two, the results are permanent. Let's expound. Policy 5407-F, page 3, Section B, C, and E are subjective. National age appropriate standards are not adopted or at the very least encouraged those guidelines for book reviewers. Without firm definitions of what constitutes inappropriate content, the review process becomes inconsistent because the reviewers are forced to rely on inherent personal biases for guidance. An academically rigorous review works much as the scientific method. One hypothesizes that the book is inappropriate. To test the hypothesis, one must conduct the experiment as free and external variables as possible to ensure that the same inclusion is reached every time. Without adopting or encouraging nationally accepted guidelines to the book review process, it becomes subjective. The results vary based on the reviewer's biases rather than the actual content of the book. National guidelines do exist, and currently this district uses commonsensemedia.org to drive age-appropriate online judices. You've already set a precedence in a similar arena. But worse still is Section 5407-4, which states the board decision is final. Any decision from a current subjective process cannot be appealed. It is one thing to accept the permanency of results from an objective process, but using a fickle subjective process and then being forced to accept the decision should make every person in this room hesitate regardless of their beliefs. If you choose both subjectivity and permanency, I have no faith that the permanent decision will adhere to national standards, and you've left me no recourse to make an appeal. This leaves great hesitation to throw away my one chance per vote at making a case. This summer, I met with Scott Haye. My points were met with disinterest. He saw his rules enforcing board book policies rather than generating new ones. When I asked him who alters the board book, his answer was somewhat vague and cited both the board and the superintendent at different times. So I did some homework. Policy 1101, quote, "The board will establish, maintain, and amend bylaws and policies," and Policy 2101-81, quote, "Policy implementation is overseen by the superintendent." The board book clearly tells me that the board adopts new policies but does not clarify which administrator can create new policies for board consideration. Scott Haye is not the one for this task, and so therefore I'm looking you in the eyes right now. Who will meet with me and champion an academically rigorous book review process? I await your reply. Good day.
Thank you. Jackie Stacy. Robin Dannerjett.
This is mostly for the interim superintendent, because I think everybody else has heard me before. Again, it's been going almost a year now trying to draw attention to a book in the the community debating about whether it should be in the library or not, just to make sure that the excerpts that I saw were minimal, but it was worse when I read it from cover to cover. So I gave the book back to the library, bought my own copy, highlighted offensive passages in the book, and turned it into the school board secretary our last meeting. I don't know if anybody at work has been able to look it over or not, but in preparation for this meeting, I thought, well, I'll just go through the first few pages, and this is like 25 pages into a 140-page book. There were 21 references to the A-word, 22 references to the F-word, nine to the S-word, 12 to the B-word, eight referring to niggers and poons. And I know we don't have teachers that are teaching our students in the classroom how to speak like this. It's a book about incest, self-harm, rape, murder, very insulting contentious language from cover to cover. And I did put in a request for a media materials review, and because I requested that in June at our last meeting, staff was off in the summer, so we decided to wait until teachers and librarians got back in session, just to save the district money from calling them during the summer, and then, yeah, it's a nice little break. But it just seems that the problem is, I don't know how the book got into the library, and it's evidently been their full pileup. Rather than going through this difficult process of removing it, it would be nice to see a policy for getting the books into the library, which wants to make the cut or not, because it is very divisive in the community. And there's like four million books, I think, published in the U.S. every year, so it's not that we've got this small amount of books to pick from. Anyway, I have to echo what Vic said, but I'd just love to see a spread policy to get the books in the best way for our students.
At this time, the conference of the board, the board's input, and the appropriate district representative will follow up with all who requested follow-up. Is there any other business before the board? There are none, we need to adjourn.